Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Mark.
Here. Could we stand for pledge and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of love, truth, and goodness, you promised to join us along the way. Give those gathered here open spirits to discern your presence within, open minds to legislate and dream with creative possibility, and open hearts to join one another in cooperation, humility, and hope. Remind us of the fierce urgency of now, bless the promises of democracy, and make freedom and equality a reality for all your children. Keep us uncomfortable with complacency and let us never be satisfied until justice rolls down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. Assure us that we have what we need for today, that you will provide us what we need for tomorrow, and that you have called us to lead your people into the future. For all this and the grace we receive this day, we give you thanks. Amen.
Amen. You've all had an opportunity to look over your agenda, but I have some changes to the agenda. Number two, the consent agenda, we're going to add the proclamation for the Women's Historic Month. So if you would mark that. And on number four, adding the Craven Community College appointment of trustees to that. And number nine will be a closed session. Do you have a number on the closed session, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Subsections A three for attorney-client privilege and subsection AC for A six for personnel.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any motion?
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes, aye. Next is the consent agenda. Sorry, petition of citizens, we don't have anybody signed up tonight, therefore, we won't have to read the petition of citizens' agenda and topics. Consent agenda, which consists of February 17th regular session and reconvened session, tax releases and refunds, K-9 donation budget amendment, military service person of the quarter resolution, and the proclamation for the history month for women.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. No, roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes, thank you. And next is Trillium Health Resources, David Peterson.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good in the presentation. Thank you for having me here.
Nice to see you.
Yes. I made the mistake last year at a commissioners' meeting and assumed that folks knew who Trillium was, so I had to slow down on the first couple of slides, so forgive me, but I appreciate you having me here tonight. I also want to thank Commissioner Liner for being a part of our regional advisory board, and Ruthie Sheets, who is an attorney here in town, is also representing Craven County on our regional advisory board, so thank you for participating in our boards. So, in this update, I want to just let you know who we are, some major changes that are happening with Medicaid transformation, potentially as we move towards an insurance model that the state is changing, and then some organizational changes that we have to make in order to meet the requirements that the state is implementing, and then at the very end, some county data specific to Craven County. So, first, we serve individuals with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use issues. We cover 26 counties from the northern part of North Carolina, all the way down to the southern part of North Carolina. We have a total population in our 26 counties of about 1.4 million. We have about 266,000 Medicaid-eligible individuals, and of that, we serve about 57,000 individuals a year. And then there's a breakdown of those with the different disability groups. About 75% of those have a primary diagnosis of mental health issues, about 20% have a primary diagnosis of substance use disorder, and about 10% have a primary diagnosis of intellectual and developmental disabilities. We don't serve those consumers directly. We contract out to about 500 agencies to do that service in our 26 counties. Total cost of those services is $475 million a year, all right? We do serve the smallest county in the state, Tarral County, and we also have the eighth largest county in the state, which is New Hanover County, and everything in between. We cover over 12,000 square miles in our 26 counties. This is just a breakdown of our regions. I am the central regional director, and in the northern region, there's 10 counties. The interesting part about this map, there's 10 counties up there, but look at the total population, 200,000 people. You have one less county in the central region, which is including Nash County, all the way out to Dare County, and we have two and a half times the number of people with one county less, almost 500,000 people. And then you go down to the southern region, which is only seven counties, and they have over 750,000 people down there, all right? So, those are the regions on how we break out. We have offices in each one of those regions. So if you haven't seen the news in the past year or so, this is the biggest thing that is happening with our system. For years, we have been serving all the Medicaid individuals that have really low needs and low-cost services to the very high-cost, high-needs individuals. We've been doing that for years. The state had put in a plan to take the low-to-moderate-risk individuals and have private insurance companies manage those individuals now. So they did an RFP for that, and on your slide, you'll see that five companies were awarded this: AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health. Those are the folks that are going to be, when this rolls out, and I'll talk a little bit about the timeframe, that are going to be managing the low-to-moderate-risk individuals. That is what we call the standard plan insurance companies, okay? So you'll hear the terms standard plan and tailored plan. What the state did was they developed a map for these private insurance companies, and you'll see in here, this map has six regions, all right? And Craven County is in Region Six, and we cover a majority of Craven County. There's a couple of counties in there that we don't currently cover, but also, you'll see in Region Five, that's a different region, but we also cover Pender, New Hanover, Brunswick, and Columbus towards the bottom, all right? So that's part of our 26. So this map does not exactly match the current map that we are under as a managed care organization, all right? So let me talk a little bit about the tailored plan. Currently, today, there's seven managed care organizations similar to Trillium, so the total of seven. In legislation, what they did was say there's going to be five to seven of us, all right? And I'm not sure if you've all been around long enough, but there used to be 41 of us. We're down to seven, okay? And this legislation is moving it to five to seven, potentially. And so, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners were asked for that map of how they wanted to be divided, and what the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and they had two representatives from Trillium. We had Commissioner Langley from Beaufort County and Commissioner Overman from Dare County represent Trillium on that committee, and the committee decided, keep the map the same the way it is today, so we can keep our 26 counties, which we were happy to hear. Thank you, county commissioners, for that decision. That being said, when this does roll out, we will be managing the high-risk, high-cost individuals, all right, with mental health and developmental disabilities and substance use. So this slide basically says the application, so we're going to have to apply in order to continue doing what we're doing, thus the five to seven. I'll do a little bragging, we're the best managed care organization in the state, we will get it, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, but the state has to accept our application and approve it. And I will say, the applications that the standard plans put in to become a standard plan, the Blue Crosses and all those folks, those applications were over 4,000 pages, okay? So we are in the process right now of putting together what we think is going to be part of our application, but up here, it says that applications will be due in late winter. Well, that got moved, we're now hearing it's going to be in April. We hope it's in April, but we also are hearing that the application process, which we don't mind on our end, they're giving us four months to turn in an application, and the state is going to take four months to review the applications, which I appreciate them taking a longer time reviewing them, especially if it's going to be 4,000 pages, all right? But if you do the math, eight months out from April, that's December, elections are over, okay? So we think that that timeframe is because of elections, all right? The other big, big difference here is we have only been managing the mental health, substance abuse, and developmental disability services, but of those individuals that are going to be high-cost, high-risk, we are also going to be managing their health, their primary care health, all right? So we will be managing the whole person. And this will date me a little bit, but back in the late 80s and 90s, there was a class action lawsuit called the Thomas S. lawsuit, where we did serve the whole person, all right? So some of us have done that in the past, and we're going to be getting back into that. The original plan for this rollout was on November 1st, they were going to have a phase-in approach to the standard plan insurance company coming in, and then February 1st, all of them would have been live, but on November 20th, the state suspended the implementation of the Medicaid transformation process. This whole thing I've been talking to you about, the state suspended it, and the only reason that we are understanding is that there was no budget to do it, since the state had not approved a budget yet, okay? So that's why it has been on hold. And they won't give us, and in some ways, that's a good thing, they won't give us a timeframe, because we would hate to gear back up again and then not have the budget to do it. And so, they're not going to give us a timeframe until they know when the budget gets passed, all right? We still will be applying for ours, like I was talking about, in April, and there's some scenarios with this that could or could not happen, but let me talk a little bit about the impact today. Well, let me, one of the things about these timeframes, so legislators come back into town April 28th. Everybody knows they're coming back into Raleigh for a short session, all right? They have been doing these carve-out budgets for certain things, but this one is a big budget to approve for this. We're not sure in this short session whether the legislators are going to approve a budget or not. Most people are predicting no.
No.
Yeah, okay? So with that being said, the state will end session, you know, particularly probably around June 30th, and then they don't come back in until January. In the legislation, where the standard plans operate, go live, and then us tailored plans go live, it states in that legislation that we, as tailored plans, go live one year after the standard plans go live, all right? So let's just say they come back into session, and then they don't approve another budget until June of 2021, then we might not go live until June of 2022, all right? Right now, we're supposed to go live June of 2021, but we think because of this budget delay, that delays us quite a bit, all right? So, one of the things that I've been talking a lot in the community about is consumers are concerned of how it's going to impact them. Right now, the budget is the same as we had last year, so it's not cut in any way. So we will continue to be able to serve the people we are currently serving now, with no impact on that, all right? We have to move forward with developing the infrastructure, because we'll be applying probably in April, as we are looking to be a tailored plan. The other big thing I was telling you about when we're going to be managing the whole person, well, we're going to have to have contracts with all the primary care doctors that serve Medicaid individuals, and we're going to have to have contracts with every single pharmacy in our 26 counties, okay? So that's thousands of additional contracts to be managing now, because we didn't manage medication before, and now we're going to be managing medication, since we're going to be managing whole person, okay? So that's some infrastructure changes, and I'll go through each of these. We have a transition team that is staying on top of all the legislation, staying on top of all the infrastructure needs, and from that, we have hired Dr. Garcia to oversee our utilization management, because we know right now, since we're only authorizing services for the three disability groups, and we're going to have to be authorizing services for additional whole-person care, we needed to get another doc to oversee that process. Our care management changes, right now, our care coordinators just manage those three disability groups, and now they're going to have to learn to manage the whole person. So there's changes internally around that department. We have started up a community development and member engagement team, and they are out in the community doing health fairs, they're doing healthy eating classes in all of our counties, and so they are trying to, and they'll be tackling housing, transportation, some of the basic social determinants of health, and that's part of that whole-person health. We did hire a head of DSS and a head of Department of Juvenile Justice, because we do know that the DSSs and juvenile justice folks deal with the whole person. Everybody is pleased that we're doing that, except for Pitt County, because we still want to pick County's DSS staff to do that, okay? So, we're excited to have those folks on to build those relationships even more. We do have, like, in our network department, because they're going to have to be contracting with a bunch of folks out in the community, they've got to develop that infrastructure for primary care and pharmacies. So, some of the funding changes, if you think about right now, the low-cost, low-risk individuals will be managed by, with Medicaid dollars, by the standard plan, and the tailored plan is going to be managing all the high-cost, high-risk individuals. Right now, the best way I can explain that is, let's just say you have someone that's very low-cost, and that cost, and I'll just throw a number out there, you know, $10 a month, okay? And then you have your high-risk, high-cost folks, and that's $1,000 a month. And then you have to do all the aggregate data, and we come up with, it costs $50 for someone, for our per-member-per-month average, all right? Well, if all the low-cost and low-risk folks go over to the insurance companies, and we're only dealing with the high-cost, high-risk individuals, our per-member-per-month is going to go way up, although the number of people we're serving is going to go way down, all right? We're looking about, remember I said we serve about 57,000 people? We're looking at about serving about 18,000 people, okay? But keep in mind, it's going to be the whole-person care and high-risk individuals, all right? And I talked about the whole-person model, and this is a waiver that the state, the 1115 waiver, is supposed to be cost-neutral when they, as they move to this. So I'm going to go through these really quickly, just in case folks have questions. So these are just some project updates. We are opening up, continue to open up some Oxford houses. We do have, in Craven County, if folks haven't seen it, the food truck, thanks to Gene Kennafick, who is our project manager on that, and if you didn't know, Gene retired, and now I'm contracting with her to stay in Craven County, okay, for a couple of months, as long as he, you know, accepts working for us part-time. We have healthy eating classes, Peloton bikes out there, we're still doing the lock zone kits to the counties, we do have chat rooms and so on, we did have hurricane response teams, and so these are all the things. We're still doing CIT classes and mental health first aid, so we're doing a lot of these different projects in the community still, and that's what separates us from a lot of the different MCOs in the state, is all these different projects, okay? So now, let me get to specifically Craven County data. So last, this last fiscal year, 4,408 individuals were served in Craven County, and the breakdown of their diagnosis, of primary diagnosis of mental health, you had 3,442, substance use was 1,059, and developmental disabilities was 494, and if you try to do the math, it doesn't add up, because some of these folks are duly diagnosed, and some of these folks are receiving services from two different disability groups, too, okay? And that is it. Any questions?
Do any commissioners have any questions?
Yes, sir. Dave, thanks for being here and everything else and coming out with this. This is supposed to have gone live already. The budget threw it completely, you know, snowball. We even had people over at DSS working for us, signing people up and everything else, and then they had to be let go, because the budget didn't come through. We, as a board, and Jack and I have talked about this, and Dave, this doesn't seem like anything, but it's definitely going to affect this county. It's going to affect this county, not only in its people that we're serving, but it's going to have an impact on carts, because the insurance companies are responsible for their own transportation and their own services to get them, which is unfair to the people, because we've worked with them for so many years. There's a lot of things we've still got to do. When we were in the negotiations with the insurance companies to contract with us for that services, the cost they wanted to provide required nowhere's met the needs of what we could provide and what they wanted. This is coming from the feds and the state, so we have really no choice on it, but it is going to be an impact for this whole county, and we need to, and I'll keep you abreast as much as I can in keeping up with Dave, and I'm not the smartest bull in this group on this thing, but it's an issue.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I've been doing this 36 years, and this is the biggest change I've seen.
Yes, Dan.
Yeah, being new to the board, my question is, and not knowing any of the history prior to what you've just given us, what is the motivation behind this change, in your opinion? In other words, is this a cost-saving measure? Is it to provide a better quality of service? What, from your perspective, what you know, what is driving this?
That's a good question. So I look at it in kind of two ways. This Medicaid transformation started in 2001, okay? So it's been going on 19 years now, all right? And so, like I said, there was 41 of us back then, and I think the intent behind trying to have fewer managed care, and they were called area programs back then, is to reduce the administrative cost, which makes sense, okay? We want more of those dollars to go to direct services, and I think that is one of the biggest intents that the state is trying to do, is the fewer of us, the more administrative dollar, or less administrative dollars will be utilized in order to get more dollars in services. I think that is one of the intents of the state, okay? With that being said, the other positive side of this is truly the whole-person health piece, okay? And I remember the days when we were managing the whole person, where we knew where their primary doc was when they were having a mental health issue, because the two interact with each other all the time, all right? So when you have a mental health issue, it could be because of a physical health issue, and vice versa, and so that's the positive side of that. There have been folks at the state level that, you know, starting in 2001, that have said, there's too many of us, and so, you know, that being said, that kind of tells the story itself, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is appointments, pending, current, upcoming. Pending appointments for Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we have five vacancies. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, three vacancies. Senior Legislative Tar Heel, alternate, one vacancy. Juvenile Prevention Council, one mental health position. Recreation Advisory Committee, I think that's McCabe, he's got, Craven Community Child Protection, and Craven Clean Sweep Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think the clerk received an application for the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee from Ms. Angela Priggin. I don't know if it was included in the agenda packet, but...
It came in late.
Came in late.
Came in late.
It's Carmel George, and she has had, completed all the final rule updates and signed off on by, again, Ms. Priggin. on by, again, Ms. Pridgen. So I would ask she be.
I think as long as we have the application, that's quite good.
All right. I'd ask she be appointed.
Pointed by acclamation. Craven County Plan Board, we also have a Craven County Community College Board trustee. We have to replace a Robin Schaefer. And generally, we replace that individual because of the nursing home, nursing home, nursing facilities in the college, training nurses. We try to keep that appointment from the hospital. So in this case, the appointment would be on James Davis RN, DNP, NEA, and BC, whatever all that stands for. He has quite a, well, she has quite a summary here. And I would ask for a motion to appoint her to the Craven County.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All right. Appointed by acclamation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can we go back here and reappoint Dora Jones for Craven County?
Oh, we forgot about, yes, Dora Jones.
I'd like to nominate her for reappointment.
Oh, okay. Appointed by acclamation. That's all we have for upcoming appointments. We have Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council. Number six, attorneys' report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, one item for your consideration this morning or this afternoon. This is a initial bid on a parcel of real estate the county acquired through a tax foreclosure. As the board knows, if you accept the bid tonight, it'll go out for advertisement, it'll be subject to upset bids, and the county will have the opportunity for final approval. This is a pretty small parcel of real estate. It's in Township 5 with the parcel ID number of 5009-031. The offer is in the amount of $2,250, which is also the current tax value. The taxes and the cost of the foreclosure were $3,067.01. I will also note for the record, it appears that this parcel is landlocked, which means it doesn't have any direct access to a public right of way, and that certainly could impact the marketability.
True.
So we would need a motion and a second and a vote if the Commissioners wish to proceed.
Make the motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Yeah, ayes have it. Thank you, sir. We don't have to do petition of citizens. There are no petitions for citizens.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
County managers' report.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a few things tonight to bring you up to speed on. At your second April meeting, we've been invited out to Park Extension for our annual luncheon with the staff and volunteers to tour the facility and learn about the programs. This will be immediately following our day meeting in April. Mr. Chairman, I would also propose while we're out there to have a moment to have a mini, what I call a mini-work session, certainly not nine hours like we had two weeks ago. But there was a couple of issues that we need to come back to from that work session.
Good idea.
I do not think it would take any longer than an hour. We can, even if we finish early, do it here and then go there. It's just hard to predict how long your meeting will be without an agenda at this time. So, but just put that on your calendar. This is second meeting in April, and unfortunately, I don't have a calendar with me, but.
April 20th.
April 20th. Also Earth Day. I know that now.
You remember that.
I know, I know when that is. Promise I'll never forget that one. We've, and I wish Mr. Hodges was here tonight to talk a little bit about this, but we've been working closely with the base. Sometime in March, we haven't got a date down, but I'll send you some information out. We'll work with them to talk about the 75th anniversary of the Iwo Jima part of World War II. And we'll be having an event here on the courthouse lawn in conjunction with Cherry Point. And we want the Commissioners to be there. We're still working out the scope of it, but the base is interested in coming up and doing something with us. So we're going to make that happen. We just got to pick a date right now. But I'll let you know, and there'll be a formal invitation. More than likely be a wreath-laying ceremony, couple speakers. I think it'd be very nice. And lastly, I mentioned to you last meeting, on Friday, all the county department budgets were due, which is a good thing. That means the departments have done all their work, and now they're turned over to Craig and myself and the management team to begin our work. So starting next Monday, we'll be sequestering ourselves periodically to review the budget and get it ready for the Commissioners in May. So just to give you that perspective, don't have a look. We haven't compiled everything yet, but certain we'll, we'll have to weed it down and talk about what we got in there.
And next meeting, I guess we'll talk about the dates as far as.
Yes, sir. I didn't bring that up tonight. I was going to wait, give you.
Good idea.
Yep. And of course, I didn't bring a calendar with me either, so that would have been helpful to do. But yes, would like to lock those up so we can go ahead and schedule the room and make sure your calendars have it on there, so.
We already had that.
I think we gave the list out after the work session. We didn't decide.
We just blocked everything.
We just have to pick which ones.
Which is the best dates.
And I would suggest, if you can, three or four consecutive dates so we can keep the, the rhythm.
Yep.
Yeah. Any questions for me? Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Questions? That's it? Commissioners' reports. Commissioner Sampson.
Yes, I have a report here. We had a very important meeting, uh, to begin to move the graves of the blacks that was moved from the White Cemetery on George Street and were moved to the Black Cemetery over in Dufferty area. And all, I just want to read the names of the blacks that were moved. And they seem to have put all the blacks, where they moved, they were fully put them in a different, different cemetery or plots. But when they moved them, they got permission from the General Assembly to have those graves moved so they put all the people in one plot together. So they are, along with the city, they met with the city and got the city permission and the city ran along with it to move these graves and put them where they could be recognized in the Black Cemetery. They did this on, on Saturday. Now, let's call some of the names out that was moved. And, Hall of Bramish, which were 49 years old, buried 1858. Elijah Brunson was 68, 69 years old, 1858. Reverend John Cook, who was 65 years old, he was buried in 1856. Delala Graham buried in 1816. William Harvey, which were 32 years old, buried in 1855. Eliza Johnson, which were 30 years old, buried in 1816. Robert Lipsy, which were 45 years old, buried in 1845. Sarah Rice, which were 45 years old, were buried in 1821. Margaret Sawyer were buried in 1812. Richard Smith, 44, were buried in 1840. Robert Walker, 26, buried in 1846. And a child born in 1770 who died in the first decade of the 1800s. So we, this overall, was something that the system hadn't gotten together, and it felt like it would be more responsible if we would come together and do, and do the right thing because the way it was done, where I could see, it was mighty slouchy the way it was done, how they moved those graves out of the White Cemetery because they didn't have enough room in the White Cemetery to put the white people. So they moved them in one, they told the legislature they were going to put them in different plots, but they put them all right there together in one place. So we have a plaque in the Black Cemetery now where the people who might be on, some of the kin of the people that were buried back there can go out there and visit the grave. This, this was a big change. They've been fighting pretty good hard to get this done, but I'm so glad it is done. Now, I just want to get uncorrecting this that was done back a long time ago. Maybe we about to come closer together and work together with each other, that we can do things together and show love as we proclaim that we love one another, that we can show this love by action. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Denny Booker.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Etiquette.
I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the Empty Bowls event on the 20th of February. It's a wonderful program to raise money to feed the hungry in RCS here. And my only other thing is please, everyone, exercise your civic responsibilities and go vote tomorrow. That's all.
Commissioner Layne.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. I just have one thing. I want to thank everybody, staff here, all the vendors, and all of the departments and everyone that showed up for Friday and Saturday for the military stand-down. Military stand-down was held Friday here at Direct Center. A large turnout, large crowd. Saturday, we headed at Cherry Point Baptist Church, had a good turnout, a good group of people and everything else. And there was a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of people out there, a lot of good information passed, and a lot of, a lot of veterans helped in getting the information, so. One other thing, Wednesday at the City Hall in Havelock, there will be a DOT meeting on Havelock's projects that DOT is running and having, comprehensive plan for, for them. So if you're interested to see what they're doing in Havelock, please attend. It goes from 3:00 to 6:00.
When was that, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
At City Hall?
Yeah.
Okay. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items. Last Monday night, Sheriff Chip Hughes and myself and Representative Keith Kivwell held a town hall meeting in Cove City. We had almost 100 people there. Good, good turnout. Appreciate the sheriff being there and his support and things he had to say, and also Commissioner Lyman came. And also, just want to announce that Partners in Education have scheduled their annual pie luncheon for June the 11th at 12:00 PM. It will be at the Havelock Tourist Center. And we're waiting on the announcement of who our speaker would be, but please put it on your calendars, and we'll be talking more about it as time comes, so. That's all, goodness, Chairman.
Okay. And I just want to remind everybody that the Wall at Heels, which is the Vietnam Veterans Replica, is on Mobile Education Center, will be here on the 26th to the 29th of March. And we anticipate big crowds, so I would like to see that everybody knows about it and can be there.
And if you haven't signed up to volunteer for one of the shifts, please do.
Addition, the Clean Sweep Committee, they're having a meeting on March the 18th. It's a workshop meeting, so anybody would like to attend that. And they say we are going to be meeting in the usual place, but I don't know what the usual place is.
Conference room.
Conference room? Okay. Thank you. And as far as that virus that's going around, I want you to know concerns regarding that, that state and local leaders are working towards it. One of the things I think that has been brought out is to avoid close contact with sick people. Stay at home when you're sick, cover your mouth and nose, and clean your hands constantly. So I just want to remind everybody of that. With that, I think we'll go into closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you.